Hello and welcome to the Revere City Council meeting of May 6, 2019. Members of the audience, please join the city council in rising to our flag.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Roll call of the members, Councilor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Keefe.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselski is absent, Councilor Patch is absent. Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rizzo.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rotundo is absent. Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of April 22, 2019.
Motion approved.
Favorable opposed, so ordered. Prior to this evening's meeting, I have a couple of items I'd like to speak on first. First is acknowledging that Iron Novosowsky is out, and we hope that he has fun tonight. And Councilor Charlie Patch is out caring for his son, who's just had, recently had two operations, and Charlie is working hard to make sure his family gets healthy again, and we wish Charlie a speedy recovery. And on a very pleasant note, I want to welcome back a dear longtime friend, Councilor from Ward 5, John Powers. John.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to, uh, thank you. I'd like to make a point of personal privilege, please.
Please state your point, Counselor.
First of all, I want to thank all of the well-wishers in Ward 5 and throughout the city of Revere who sent me cards, called, or in some cases even brought over a hot dish of pasta. And I also want to thank my colleagues in government who also responded and were right there for me, including Mayor Rego and council, people that work in city governments. I'd also like to pay a special thanks to Revere Police Department and the Revere Fire Department for their quick response in coming to the scene of an accident I was involved in and getting me proper medical care as quickly as possible. And also, first responders, also, Katala Wenderins and anyone else that was involved. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor, and welcome back again. (applause) The next order of business, sadly enough, would have to just offer out this to the folks at home and to the members of the council and members in the audience. This past week, at the Parvay School, we lost a fourth grader to a very untimely death. And what I would like to reach out, and why I am mentioning this this evening, there's a GoFundMe page that's already been established with the Urgerio Funeral Parlour, which is located in East Boston. So anybody wishing to help the family which is in need of some funding, please visit that site and do what you can to help the family in this very trying time of need. Thank you. And also, we have one other further business, that Counselor Joanna McKenna has asked for a point of personal privilege. Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the city workers that volunteered their time to rebuild the Pearl Ave public stairs, and also a thank you to the mayor and his staff and the Beach Water Improvement Committee. Also, I would like to give a big thank you to Speaker DeLeo and his staff, Joe Masillo and Barbara Bishop, for finally, after eight years, getting the Rita Singer Bridge lights fixed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number three is the Ways and Means Subcommittee Report.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Tonight, the Ways and Means Subcommittee met to discuss four issues. The first issue was 19-009, which was a motion by Council Rotundo about the feasibility of providing an owner-occupied tax incentive for first responders. Council Rotundo was not here to discuss his motion, so it was decided at that time to lay this on the table for a subsequent Ways and Means Committee meeting. Calendar item number 19-031, which was a motion presented by Council Morabito requesting a fund, or to establish a fund allowing 30 percent of revenues that would derive from short-term rentals go towards affordable housing assistance. This was also laid on the table. We have since received some information pertaining to legislation that's been passed at the state level that can assist us in proceeding with this, but again, that was decided in Subcommittee to lay on the table until a subsequent meeting. Calendar item, uh, I'm sorry, 19-069, which was a communication regarding a business personal property exemption. That was voted favorably unanimously by the Subcommittee, and I would like, if it's the will of the President, to ask for roll call to adopt this.
And shall the city council accept the provisions of MGL Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 54 relative to the personal property tax exemption for businesses? On the roll call.
On the roll call, Councilor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselski is absent, Councilor Patch is absent. Councilor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, this general law has been accepted.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. President. The last item of business before the committee was relative to initiatives in support of Revere veterans. There were actually three items that pertain to exemptions or benefits for veterans. Two of them had already been decided. One of them, we're just waiting for some additional guidance and paperwork on, so that would be the Veteran Work Off Program. We're waiting for details on that. But the one that was voted on was the Surviving Family Exemption. It pertains to two Gold Star families, totals about $11,000, a very small amount of money for the city, but obviously for an extremely worthy cause. These Gold Star families are more than deserving, and it was voted unanimously by those members present in the Ways and Means Subcommittee meeting to vote it out in favor of this exemption. So with that, Ms. President, if it's the will of you and members of the council, like a roll call on that as well.
On the request of the chairperson from the Ways and Means, shall the city council accept the provisions of MGL Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22H relative to the Surviving Family Exemption? Roll call is in order.
On the roll call, Councilor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselski is absent, Councilor Patch is absent. Councilor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, this general law has been accepted.
Mr. President, that concluded.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. President, thank you. That concluded our Subcommittee report.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Appointment Subcommittee Report.
Madam Chairwoman, Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, prior to the city council meeting, the Appointment Subcommittee met. There were three items on the agenda. One will remain in committee, 19-088. Two were voted favorably unanimously, and that was 19-76 and 19-89. So I ask that we take these up before the council will hold this evening. Thank you.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Onto motions. Calendar item number 10, motion presented by Councilor Rizzo. June 6, 2019 marks the 75th anniversary of D-Day, Operation Overlord, the Allied Invasion across the English Channel and onto the beaches and villages of Normandy, France. Many Revere soldiers, sailors, paratroopers, and aircraft pilots participated in the invasion, and many died. Of those who returned home, very few are still living. It would be fitting if the city of Revere commemorated this important date in the history of our nation. I recommend that the city conducts a memorial ceremony on June 6, 2019, and that we invite any veterans of that battle to attend along with other military veterans to commemorate this important milestone.
Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, the motion speaks for itself. This will be the 75th anniversary of Operation Overlord, otherwise known as the Battle of Normandy, and otherwise known as D-Day. It obviously was a major milestone, not only in this country, or father's country, but for the world. So I think it would be fitting for the city to hold a ceremony marking the 75th anniversary. And as the motion alludes to, any living members surely should be invited, but I think any veteran, you know, obviously willing to participate, should do so. Thank you very much, Ms. President.
Thank you, Counselor. State your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Counsel. Mark Silvestri, 501 Revere Beach Parkway, Director of Veteran Services. Councilor Rizzo, I commend you for this motion, and I support it 100 percent. Although we have been planning a D-Day and a June 6 breakfast for that day was already in the works, and I sent the council an email out this morning. If you have any ideas or any specific veterans that you have in mind that should be invited, please, that would help out. And we honor, and that's one of the biggest honors. D-Day was, like you said, an important day in history, as well as it was in Revere's history. We have not many left. I can think of maybe one or two, but several Revere residents have been highly decorated from that invasion in the following after Omaha Beach and the rest of World War II. Again, I support your motion. We will be having a breakfast on the June 6 day in commemoration of D-Day, and I hope you all be in attendance. Thank you.
Thank you. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 11, motion presented by Councilor Rotundo, that the city of Revere look into the feasibility of placing Narcan and AED devices in facilities that serve the public and have public restrooms. The attempt of this motion is to address the issue of overdosing in public bathrooms and the issue of in-community heart attacks.
Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. This really speaks for itself. There have been similar motions in the past where I have asked for them to be in very large buildings, both commercial and residential, but sadly, the, you know, the more I go to various places inside the city, outside the city, I've seen people literally overdose in various coffee shops and so forth, to the point, like carrying Narcan with me at all times and so forth. And recently, actually out of state, had an incident where an older fellow actually had succumbed to a cardiac event, and very lucky to get this person back, especially when it's in community, and they were very lucky to be near a hospital on top of it. But it's a very small number, shall I say, a very small cost, that can clearly save a life for various reasons, whether it be using the Narcan, the ability to use an AED. It's a pretty self-explanatory process, but nonetheless, it's something that we should probably ask our community if they're willing to do.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councils wishing to speak? Counselor McKenna. Counselor Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You were ducking back. I think Councilor Janino wanted to speak. I was going to go, women's preference.
I would agree that this potentially has some good ideas to it, and I would maybe ask that we, if this does get discussed in some sort of Subcommittee, that maybe we invite members of Revere Chamber of Commerce to come and discuss some of their opinions on the matter. I know that they, you know, it's one of those, it's a good, healthy balance. They want to be able to serve the public, and, but they also want to be able to protect their guests from being, when they're in the restaurants, in case there are emergencies, so, but maybe get some insight on how they would maybe look for some support in this matter. I know that there is a small cost, but for some businesses, any cost is a lot, so it would probably be good to get some of their input, and I would suggest that. Thank you.
Counselor Janino. No, wishing to speak. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I certainly think this motion has merit, and I do have some concerns, and I'd want to iron them out in committee. I'm certified in CPR and know how to use this device, but there's training that goes along with this, and there is a cost, and, you know, there's a maintenance upkeep and everything, so, you know, you'd have to get a willing participant in the business unless we're going to fund them. So, uh, well, I guess we can work all this out in committee, but it certainly has merit. Anytime you have a chance of saving lives, let's face it, that's what we want to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's an excellent motion, and I think it should be seriously discussed in committee. I think we should have representatives from the police and fire departments there to let us know what the pros and cons are with regard to this, and anytime we have an opportunity here to save a life, I think that's a responsibility we have to live up to. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. This is going to go to the Public Safety Subcommittee. Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number 12, motion presented by Councilor Keefe, that the mayor requests assistance from Senator Markey and Senator Warren relative to recent FCC regulations prohibiting cities and towns from denying small cell antenna installations.
Counsel Vice President Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know that the last few council meetings, we've had a lot of healthy discussion in regards to small cell antennas, and recognizing there's not a lot as a council we can do to help to refuse these on the basis of health, I think it'd be important that we have to take this to another level of government in our state. Can't think of anyone better or higher that helps represent us at a national level, than Senators Markey and Elizabeth Warren. So I would ask that we submit a letter from our city solicitor or from our city council requesting some of their support on this matter.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I certainly support my colleague's motion here, you know. I'm in a tough position as the zoning chair, I have to follow the laws, so the only way to deny these things is to change the law. So I certainly support the effort, and perhaps we can also ask them to get us real research on these health issues that are claimed, but nobody's come up with proof yet. So if they are in fact a health hazard, that should be the, obviously the predicate for this new law to be changed, but I certainly support my colleague's effort, and there we go. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councils wishing to speak? Seeing none, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 13, motion presented by Councilor Rizzo, that the mayor requests the Department of Transportation to examine, study, and implement an expanded deceleration lane on Route 60 East heading from Copeland Circle, turning into Northgate Shopping Plaza. During many hours of the day, motorists can be backed up into Copeland Circle because of vehicles turning into Northgate. If a deceleration lane is not feasible, then the lights and signalization need to be studied.
Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you very much. You know, this is basically, you know, again, the motion kind of speaks for itself. You know, people now that are entering Northgate Shopping Center, coming from the Showcase Cinemas around Route 60 and Copeland Circle, it's causing major, major, especially during certain times, major backup, so we need to be working with DOT to increase the size of that deceleration lane so more vehicles can queue up, and then that light, obviously, is going to have to be adjusted to let more people into Northgate so that the traffic flows more smoothly. I've since been told that there have been conversations going on with DOT. I don't know specifics in terms of timelines, but as long as it's in progress and it's moving forward and going in a positive direction, then there's really no need to push on that motion, but I do want to make sure that this isn't something that falls through the cracks, that the plan is moving forward, and that we will have a date when this will be happening, because, you know, every day that goes by causes further and further frustration for people that get caught up in that, in that traffic. Thank you very much, Ms. President.
Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you. Oh, this has obviously been an ongoing issue, and I think part and parcel of this, and as Captain Gago is at the podium, we can probably have this referred also back to the mayor's office, and hopefully he's listening, and the council can send a letter too. There were many aspects of traffic remediation that Roseland Property was supposed to do as part and parcel of their agreement with the city of Revere, and I'm wondering if they've done all that they're supposed to do, and I would like to kind of get a, you know, a copy of the document that was signed by the city as part of the agreement between the city and Roseland Property, obviously the dual Malden and Revere Fire Departments up there at Roseland and so forth. So I'd like to see whether they've kept to their commitments, and if they haven't, whether or not we can actually force them to follow through with their commitments. Obviously, it was supposed to be some work up there, and at present, as you know, hasn't been done. Thank you.
Any other councils wishing to speak? Seeing none, Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I sent the councilors an email, and I also spoke to Councilor Rizzo. About two years ago, Route 1, the state budgeted money to do the whole Route 1 over from Copeland Circle down into Everett, and when I found out about it, I asked for some changes to the project, and a couple of the changes were all the ramps at Copeland Circle. The most significant was when you come off Route 1 at Showcase, we divided the ramp into two. I requested they widen it and make it into two lanes, and it stopped the backup on Route 1. And I also asked them to increase the left-hand turn lane at Market Basket, which has been approved, and I spoke to Council Rizzo, and they're supposed to start the work in June. It would have been done sooner, but there was a gas vent where we were going to extend the left-hand turn lane, and that's been worked out. So that work should be taking place soon, and there was also lengthy discussion about that when we did the traffic study throughout the whole city with HYM, but this project will come off HYM's list, and Mass Highway is going to do it as part of the Route 1 project right away now. So that's going to make a significant difference to the traffic on Squire Road.
You're pretty much aware of the fact that that Northgate area, because of the frequent visits to Market Basket, has created quite a nightmare there.
Yes, that's why I requested the change.
It's gridlocked, come every holiday. I mean, you just can't get in or out of there, and it's really a dangerous situation because there's so many now residents who live in close proximity to those locations, and God forbid, you need to get apparatus in there to help these folks that would be in need of help. It can't happen because it's gridlocked all over the place.
Also, myself and Sergeant Janino, about six months ago, Northgate had put me, when you first go in the mall, a four-way intersection. We had them take the stop signs down, and the people going into the mall have priority, and that's helped. But when the stop and stop strike was going on, it really exasperated the traffic, and I'm glad this is going to get done sooner than later. So I wanted the council to be aware of that.
Thank you. Any other, Counselor Rizzo.
Yeah, and, you know, unless any of the council that hasn't spoken wants to speak, I just wanted just to finish up because you brought up a very valid point, and that is, you know, holidays, absolutely, it backs up there, and it backs up in many different directions, but, you know, so, so the Market Basket going in there is, in some ways, a big blessing, because obviously there's thousands of Revere residents that show up there. It gives them an alternative to just one supermarket, but the curse side of it is the traffic that people have to deal with. So, you know, if we can continue to develop or look into ways that can mitigate that traffic, you know, this could just be a work in progress, like we're doing this deceleration lane starting in, starting in June. Maybe there's some other alternatives that, as time goes along, we could uncover that will make that traffic flow a little smoother, so, but you are right, there are absolutely peak times when the traffic is very, very difficult down there.
I don't think it's only fair to our residents that, you know, we just can't sit back and be complacent and say, well, you know, it'll work itself out. This is not obviously going to work itself out. It's only going to get worse, and, you know, and people being what they are get to, get the ahead of the next guy, so we're waiting for a lot of problems happening up the road, and we try to prevent that. That's what our job is to do.
Mr. President, we also had a very extensive, probably the biggest one ever done because of the Suffolk Downs development. HYM paid for that traffic study, and it's probably a list of over 30 locations, and it's on a plan to do immediate changes, five-year changes, 10-year changes, but there's a pretty comprehensive list, and myself, Frank Strangie, Sergeant Janino, we've been working with them, along with the consultants, and hopefully we'll start rolling out some of those improvements. Some of them are mine, are striping, left-hand, right-hand turn arrows, extending some lanes, short-money projects that'll make a difference, and then some are very significant projects that'll cost a lot of money.
I know, but I, my theory is always that, you know, 10 years is 100 years away. We're trying to help people right now, and as soon as, as quick as we can get this done.
So that is all in the works.
Thank you.
And one last thing, I spoke to the mayor the other day. We're probably going to have to invest some money in the near future for the traffic signals on Broadway. All the traffic loops have been torn up during all the different times Broadway was repaved, and the signals are probably going to all have to be done over and then be coordinated and synchronized. So that's going to be a costly item, but I think it's time that we look at that and address that in the near future. Thank you.
Counsel Rotundo.
President Guanasso, if no one else, I don't want to enter, you know, enter seat over somebody.
Yes, the floor.
Okay, thank you. Through you, Mr. President, to Chief Guido, if at all possible, if you could have the mayor or you through email, send us an idea of when we're having the next hearings, I guess, someone whispered in my ear, that there might be meetings up at Roseland that are currently going on. I wasn't aware of them, and I guess it has to do with some of the projects that they have planned for the city.
The only hearing we had was before the Traffic Commission, and that was ironed out. It was between Malden's Traffic Commission and Revere's Traffic Commission. That was months ago, and they're supposed to be rerouting the entrance to Rose Quarry, and so everything's kind of on hold till they move the entrance over, and then they're going to put complete signalization. But that's part of the mitigation from the Revere side and on the Malden side of the project.
And being a member of the Traffic Commission, and I'll bring it up again, but just kind of, you're here, I may tell you my concern. So as you turn right from Broadway into Park Avenue by Valores, as you know.
Yes.
It's a very difficult turn for the buses. My hope would be to actually move the stop line back also on the P2W side, so that anybody that is stopping going eastbound from the north of Park into Broadway is back at least 50 feet.
So the bus can make the turn. That's a good idea.
And the same thing, maybe a little bit shorter, maybe on the left side where Valores is, it'll do two, three, of three things. It'll actually allow ease of access for pedestrians without fear of being cracked. It'll stop the buses from actually hitting a car. It'll actually allow the flow of traffic to go a lot, a lot better, and more importantly, it's just going to make it easier for people to turn right onto Broadway if you do that as well.
I know that.
Congestion-wise.
I know that pretty soon the DPW is going to be going out doing striping, and I talked to Paul Argenzio about adding a few places, like for one example, when you come down Park Ave, add a right-hand turn lane. At Revere Street at Blanchard's, add a right-hand turn lane there, try to get the traffic flowing a little better. And we're also looking at, but we still have to discuss with the ward council and review it some more, making Revere Street, the short part of Revere Street from North Shore Road up to the beach, no parking both sides, and allow for two lanes coming down off the beach and have a left-hand turn lane.
I've been asking for that for two years.
And a straight and a right-hand turn lane. So that's in the works, but every time you make a change, as we just learned with Endicott Ave, some people like it and some people don't, so we're trying to go slow and make logical decisions. But there is improvements that we're going to make, just with striping and left and right hand turn arrows. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Chief. On Counsel Rizzo's motion, all, Counsel Powers.
Mayor, if I may, Chief Guido, I understand that would be a positive improvement, limiting the parking from North Shore Road down to the Ocean Avenue.
Up to the Cove, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. However, I, before that is done, I'd like to see some help given to the residents that live on Revere Street. I mean, there are six-unit condos there.
Right.
There are four-unit condos, there are apartments, and, and these are, these are buildings that were permitted by the city of Revere years ago, and I'd like to make sure that these people, whether it's on Satcham Street or some other street down there, get some relief for parking.
I understand, but we're talking about maybe a total of eight parking spaces that we can greatly improve the traffic flow, eliminating those spaces. So it's being looked at, and if it goes forward, it'll be a public hearing.
Okay, thank you very much.
On Counsel Rizzo's motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 14, motion presented by Councilor McKenna, that the mayor be requested to send a letter of support to our state delegation for Senate Bill Number 452, an act relative to the proper disposal of four fifty-two, an act relative to the proper disposal of miniatures. The passage of this act would provide for a five-cent deposit on NIPs and drastically reduce the number of these small plastic or glass bottles being littered throughout our streets and parks. Representative Vincent is a petitioner of this bill.
Counsel McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So when we had cleanup Revere, we must have picked up about fifty NIP bottles just in one area. So I think it's really getting out of control, just like the scratch tickets. But I'd really like to see if we could do something as a city. So, thank you.
Counselor Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to speak in support of this from my colleague, Counselor McKenna, and also our state delegation, and Representative Vincent, who's really doing a great job at spearheading this. So, thank you both.
Well, I also agree with this wholeheartedly based on the fact that Patriot Parkway is covered with them, and it just, and you know why they're being disposed of there. They don't want to drive with an open container, and so that gives a serious problem. But I kind of think that the legislation is going to go through on the state, and I think that us giving a little bit of a hand to it would be beneficial. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Pat Melchior, Sagamo Street. I think it's great, but you know what's better than five cents? Enforcing people to throw crap out the window. There's a whole bunch of NIPs at my stop sign. I'm all about, you know, let's, I bet you, I bet you this doesn't happen in Newton, you know, throwing out the Happy Meal, you know, because they're stopping these people and giving them a ticket. How about enforcing?
Thank you. Any other councils wishing to speak? All in favor of the motion? Counselor McKenna, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number fifteen, motion presented by Counselor McKenna, that the mayor request inspectional services to request the owners of thirty-six forty Furlong Drive to install security cameras at the rear of the property for the purpose of deterring illegal littering, dumping, and squatting.
Counsel McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I got, I obtained a bunch of pitches, and I went back there behind Target, the mattress place and Stop and Shop, and it was horrendous what I saw. We had squatters in the weeds, and they left a mess. We had dumping down there. It was just, it was horrible. So the city does have this now. They, I don't know if they did find them and clean that up, but I'm just asking for maybe some cameras, live cameras, to be in back of there, and a couple of signs being posted, so people know that they can't dump down there. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Any other councils wishing to speak on Counselor McKenna's motion? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered. Be, no further business being held this evening. This council will stand adjourned until May twentieth at six PM. Thank you for your attention.